Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills. Twenty-two dash oh one eight nine, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash oh one eight nine, twenty-two dash oh two oh three, twenty-two dash oh two one nine, and twenty-two dash two two eight. The hearing for Bill twenty-two dash zero two hundred, which was scheduled for 2:00 PM, has been canceled. The applicant did not meet the public notice requirements. We will begin the next scheduled hearing for Bill twenty-two dash oh two nineteen, which is now, and is past 2:05 PM, so we are in compliance. In attendance, we have Councilman Robert Stokes of the 12th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the 14th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I think we have Councilman Antonio Glover of the 13th District on line. Is he on yet? Or he will be shortly. And we also have Councilmember Zeke Cohen of the First District, sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And members of the Office of the President. We have Nikki Thompson on line, Director of Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. We have present Erin DeGraffan Reed, General Counsel for the Office of the President. And I think that covers that. And representing the Office of the Mayor, I see... Oh, there you are, Nina. I see Nina Themelis, Government Relations, and also Sophia G.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized. When recognized, please identify yourself and the agency or organization that you represent. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. Let's begin with Bill number twenty-two dash oh two nineteen, which is the Plan Unit Development Amendment for Harbor Point for the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Harbor Point Plan Unit Development. This bill was introduced on April 4th, 2022. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Cohen. Councilmember Cohen, would you like to comment about the bill?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all the agency folks. This bill is, was a long time coming. It, before I was on council, Harbor Point was able to attain a large TIF, Tax Increment Financing Package. We know that Harbor Point is an area that has seen a lot of growth and has done really, really well over the past couple of years. What this legislation would do is enable increased density within the footprint, enable us to pay back the TIF bonds faster, and enable us to move forward with bringing more people into an area that is economically thriving. Whether or not Harbor Point should have gotten that TIF originally is not at issue here. What I've been really proud of is we've had some very robust negotiations and conversations with the development team. And I feel really good about the place that we landed in terms of their commitment to local hire, affordable housing, and making sure that as we are growing our tax base and as we are growing in an area that has done really, really well and that has seen both economic investment through Exelon and a whole bunch of other companies that have moved in there, as well as a lot of folks moving into the apartment buildings that were also supporting other parts of Baltimore. Because at the end of the day, if Harbor Point does extremely well, but the rest of our city, it does not, that's not good enough. And so, I'm really glad at the, about the conversations we've had. I'm glad, appreciate the development team's willingness to partner in thinking strategically about how, as we grow this area, we're also able to support other parts of Baltimore. I appreciate Build Baltimoreans United in Leadership Development for their role in fostering conversations. And I appreciate the community associations, Falls Point, Little Italy, that have also been supportive. So with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we do have Councilman Glover on line. And so that, so we do have a quorum to be able to vote on our bills today. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions from committee at this point? Okay. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. And we'll start with the Planning Commission. And we have Tamara Woods from Planning Commission that's going to talk on this bill.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And committee members, Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning. And I won't go through a summary unless you want to. I believe Councilman Cohen went through pretty in-depth, but I'll make a couple of highlights. So on April 28th, 2022, the Planning Commission did hear the City Council bill and voted to amend and approve the bill. And I believe you have in your packets the amendments that were sent over from Legislative Reference.
Yes, finding and amendments are in committee members' packets.
Okay. So I'll walk through those pretty briefly. But the gist of the bill, from a technical standpoint, does a few things for us. It actually is replacing all of the sheets, the exhibits of the PUD. So that's a major change and piece of the bill. But it's also right sizing, I would say, the PUD itself to the current zoning, which is C5. And so that's a kind of a land use change. In 2017, with the new zoning code, we changed the underlying zoning to C5. So the PUD is actually just catching up with what the underlying zoning is. So that's a big piece of it. The other piece that you'll see that's been made pretty clear is that, you know, everyone is used to the sandlot and the sandlot eventually will be replaced with Point Park, which has been approved. But this PUD is making it clear that the park would be delivered on or before the development of Parcel Three, which is the T. Rowe Price Building that's coming. So those are some of the big pieces that are coming, that are in the PUD. The amendments, I'm going to walk through really pretty quickly. It's not a lot of them. The first thing is to change the language, starting on page two of the bill, that's speaking to the exhibits. I won't read through all of it because it's, you know, pretty, pretty technical. But it's actually just making clear which PUD sheets are actually included in the bill and being replaced. So you have that as the First Amendment. Also, in the packet, you'll actually see the PDF, the images of the PUD sheets themselves. So the committee does know which ones are being included. The second thing that's being done in this bill is, currently in the PUD, there is in Exhibit Eight. That's actually a document and not a sheet. Exhibit Eight is the design guidelines. We are proposing that those be repealed altogether. They're no longer needed. They were actually done in the 2013 repeal and replace of the PUD. The PUD is either, you know, under construction and we have, I think, the next three or four projects that are in for permitting. So with the exception of Parcel One, there's nothing else left to design for Harbor Point. So we do feel that it's time for those design guidelines to go away. The infrastructure is built. Also, since 2017 transform, we have codified design review, which was not the case in 2013. So there will not, you know, be an instance where that project won't have the proper review. It's codified in a different way. So that's the second piece of the amendments that we're proposing. The last one is really pretty simple, is changing the PUD sheet reference. And from the bill, the current PUD says Sheet Six. The bill proposes Sheet Five. The actual language of Sheet Six is correct. So we're seeking to delete the change that's in the first reader. So that's the extent of our amendments. And with those, if you would accept those, then we would recommend approval. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. And I do want to recognize Councilman Dorsey of the Third District, Member of the Committee, has now joined us. And also note that Caroline Hecker, Representative for the applicant, has also submitted proposed findings. At this point, are there any questions before we move on with the other agency reports? Hearing done, we'll move on. And we'll start with the City Solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Hillary Ruley from the City Solicitor's Office. We approve the bill and the amendments for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. And the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA defers to the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you, Liam. Department of Housing, Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We too stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Salif Omar, Economic Development Officer with BDC. And we stand by our agency report as favorable.
Thank you. Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Kim Washington for Baltimore City Fire Department. We stand by our report, which is no objection.
Thank you, Kim. And Department of Public Works, Marsha Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We stand by our report. We are in support of the passage, inclusive of the amendments that the Planning Department has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions at this point? Hearing done. And the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Arco Sam from the Parking Authority. And we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you, Arco. I almost left you out there. The committee will now take public testimony. Computer users, please use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name. Attendees who call in by telephone will be unmuted. Callers will hear two beeps. If you wish to testify, please state your name. If you do not wish to testify, please say so. And now we're checking. Now, before we do that, let's go to Caroline Hecker. Hi, Caroline.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. I'm standing in for Ryan Potter today of Gallagher, Avilius, and Jones. I'm joined by his law partner, Mark Keener, as well as Jonathan Fletcher, on behalf of the developer. I want to thank Tamara for her excellent report from the Planning Commission. We are in agreement with all the amendments that are proposed. I'm going to thank Councilman Cohen for sponsoring the bill. We're happy to take any questions that the committee might have. I did submit written findings of fact for the committee's consideration in advance. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Could you just speak through the, to the findings verbally?
I'd be happy to go through them. They're quite extensive. Under the new code, there are a total of 35 different findings that the commission, or the committees are...
Just a general synopsis.
I'll give a brief overview. They generally get to the consistency of the amendment with the city's master plan and the potential for adverse impacts in a variety of different fashions. But in this case, the amendment is, as Ms. Woods indicated, really to bring the PUD up to speed with the current underlying zoning, which has taken place since the PUD was originally enacted. So in that manner, it is entirely consistent with the city's master plan. We're not expecting there to be any adverse impacts on public health, safety, general welfare. This will simply facilitate the final phase of redevelopment within the Harbor Point project.
Thank you. Thank you.
And there are much more detailed findings in what I submitted, if you're interested.
And just as a reminder, the committee does have copies in their packet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any callers? No callers and no attendees. We're going to check with one person though. Rob Feely? Are you there? Rob? Feely?
Yes, no comment.
Are you, is your testimony for Bill twenty-two dash oh two nineteen?
No, no testimony.
Thank you. And I think that's it. Okay, the committee heard testimony that addresses the legal standards and findings. Are there, yes, there are amendments? Is there a motion to move the amendments from the committee?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second. Second by Dorsey. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Is there a motion to move the bill?
Move as a favorable amendment.
Second.
Moved by Dorsey. Second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock absent. Conway absent. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover?
Yes.
Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. This bill will move to second reader at our next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Next bill. And as they are moving out, next bill, twenty-two dash oh one eight nine. Repeal of Ordinance Oh Seven dash six oh nine and Oh Nine dash one three nine, Westport Waterfront Plan Unit Development for the purpose of repealing Ordinance Oh Seven dash six oh nine, which designated certain properties as a business plan unit development known as Westport Waterfront, repealing Ordinance Oh Nine dash one three nine, which amended Ordinance Oh Seven dash six oh nine and providing for a special effective date. The bill was introduced on January 10th, 2022. The bill sponsor is Councilwoman Porter. And the committee will now hear from agency representatives. And we do have, I want to recognize, Member of the Committee, Councilman John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Has now joined us. Okay, we'll now hear from agency representatives. And we'll start with the Planning Department, Martin French.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. At its regular meeting on February 10th of this year, the Planning Commission considered the City Council Bill twenty-two zero one eight nine. The Planning Commission reviewed a staff report, which recommended approval. The Planning Commission concurred with its staff and resolved to recommend approval of the bill and of specific findings in that bill. Very specifically, the Planning Commission found that the two ordinances selected for repeal by this bill are no longer necessary. The Westport Waterfront Development District and the Westport Special Taxing District are no longer necessary because of changes in the zoning code, which occurred since the adoption of those original ordinances. And very specifically, Westport can now be redeveloped according to the zoning code now in effect and the map of the zoning code that's now in effect for Westport. The Commission also noted that because of this, there is no longer a necessary cause for a Westport Special Taxing District. And the current redeveloper of Westport Waterfront has indicated ability to proceed with the redevelopment without having to make any use of special tax credits. And therefore, that bill, that ordinance, pardon me, is also no longer necessary. The Commission found specifically that the repeal of the planned unit development is in the public interest because it's no longer necessary for the properties, in light of the property's underlying zoning. And it has been, the original planned unit development has been abandoned by the previous property owner. And therefore, no need. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, specifically from the members of the committee concerning the department's recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Any questions from committee? Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you so much. I was noticing in your report that there's two bills that will do the repeal, that we're just doing the one today and then the other at some other point? Or did we already do that one?
My understanding is the bill in front of you today would repeal two ordinances that already exist.
Correct. On page, February 22nd, February 10th, your report of February 10th says, you know, zero one eight nine repeals these two and then zero one ninety.
That's another committee. One is in another committee.
Got it. Okay. I understand now. Thank you. That was it.
Yeah, they're companion bills, but you're correct. They're not assigned to the same committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on with the other reports. And we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietra for the Baltimore City Law Department. The Law Department has reviewed the bill and finds that it is consistent with the requirements of the land use article for amending or repealing a planned unit development. So we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Elena. Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA takes no position on this bill.
Thank you, Nina. And the Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, no objection.
Housing.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this legislation.
Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luis Cardona, Director of Neighborhood Development, BDC. We stand by our agency report as favorable on this bill.
Thank you. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Christmas age from the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report, which is do not oppose.
Thank you. Public Works.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We stand by our report and are in support of passage of City Council Bill twenty-two oh one eight nine. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Kim Washington, Baltimore City Fire Department. We stand by our agency report, which is no objection.
Thank you. And now we're going to check for public testimony. Yes. Mr. Feely, are you here for this bill? Twenty-two dash oh one eight nine?
No, no testimony. I'm also, I'm not here for any of the bills. I'm just viewing today.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And so I think that's it. We have no other public testimony. But the committee did hear testimony that addresses the legal standards and findings. And there are no amendments. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dorsey. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway absent. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. And now, the next bill, number twenty-two dash oh two oh three, zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit to two dwellings units in the R8 zoning district, which is two 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 three Calo Avenue, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zone district on the property known as two 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 three Calo Avenue, block three four four six, lot sixty-four, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. This bill was introduced on March 7th, 2022, and sponsored by Councilmember Torrance, which has joined us. Councilmember, would you like to comment about this bill?
Sorry, Glover. Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Torrance of the Seventh District. This bill was approved by the Community Association, which is the Reservoir Hill Association, as well as Upper Utah Madison and others. They have provided a lot of support, which is also in the bill file. In addition to that, Mr. Penny has done a significant outreach with the adjoining neighbors, who also are in support of this matter. With that being said, I wholeheartedly support this matter.
Thank you. Any questions for the council members, sponsor of the bill? Hearing done. We'll now hear from agency representatives. And we'll start with planning. Martin French.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the committee. At its regular meeting on April 28th of this year, the Planning Commission considered City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero two zero three. The Commission heard testimony concerning this bill. The staff report recommended approval of this bill, and the Planning Commission agreed to recommend approval. The Planning Commission specifically, in making that recommendation, finds that the proposed use in the bill, as provided in the bill, would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare, would not be precluded by any other law, including an applicable urban renewal plan, would not be contrary to the public interest, would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code, and meets all criteria for approval specified in subsection four, six, B of the zoning code of Baltimore City, as further described in the staff report that you have in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. French? Hearing done. We'll move on. City Solicitor?
Madam Chair, Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA defers to the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Liam of Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. And we have Stephanie with Housing.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock with DHCD. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. The Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luis Cardona with BDC. We stand by our agency report in support of this bill.
Thank you. And Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim Bonstutton with the Parking Authority. We do not oppose.
Thank you. And the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Kim Washington, BCFD. We have no objection. Stand by our agency report.
Thank you. And we see no public testimony, correct? None online, and no one has signed in. And the committee heard testimony that addresses the legal standards and findings. And so, is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Dorsey. And second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock? Absent? Oh, Bullock?
Aye.
Conway is absent. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover? Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will be moved to second reader. Thank you. Councilman Torrance. Okay, next bill, number twenty-two dash zero two two eight. Midtown Community Benefits District Amendment for the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Harbor Point Plan Unit Development. Plan Unit Development. This bill was introduced on April 4th, 2022. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Costello.
And Stokes.
And we have Councilman Costello that has joined us. Councilman Costello, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this bill was introduced by me and Councilman Stokes, essentially an amendment to the authorizing legislation for Midtown Community Benefits District. Not going to speak on it at this moment, but we have been, Councilman Stokes and I have been working with Department of Finance, as well as the Executive Director for Midtown Community Benefits District on some amendment language. So I think we're prepared to proceed with the hearing today. We'd like to get some input from Department of Law on the amendment. And if we can reach agreement in a timely fashion today, I think Councilman Stokes and I would ask for your favorable consideration to move the bill. If not, we would ask to go into recess on this matter and we will meet offline with Finance Law and Midtown Community Benefits District. The only other request for your consideration, Madam Chair, is if we could elevate Eric Souza, who's the Executive Director of Midtown Community Benefits District, to a panelist position. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Are there any questions to the sponsor of the bill before we move on? And hearing done, we'll start with our agency reports. And we'll start with the Department of Planning, Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. The Planning Department was asked to comment on this bill and the department has no opposition to the passage of the bill.
Thank you. And then we'll go ahead and move to the Department of Finance. Are they here? Oh, hi. Eric, how are you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pedro Ponte, Assistant Director of the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We are going to be helping, Councilman Costello is sponsor of the bill for some amendments that we believe are necessary to clarify the intent of the district. We put together a response. We believe there's no material fiscal impact to the city, but as drafted, it may have some impact for some taxpayers within this allocation. And I'm happy to answer any question you may have.
Thank you. City Solicitor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena De Pietra from the Law Department. In the original form of the bill, we found no issues, legal issues with the bill. It was being amended as required by the law. It's my understanding, if you'd like me to comment on the amendment now, I'd be happy to.
Yes.
So as I understand the amendment, it's returning it to, the one section to its original condition, which included the word credits. Credits is no longer being deleted. By returning credits to the language there, we're really just going back to the status quo, which means that certain credits, depending on how they are worded, would, whatever is currently being applied to the supplemental tax, will continue to be applied to the supplemental tax as a credit.
Any questions to the city solicitor's office?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we just had a conference call a short while ago, me and Pedro and Eric from Midtown Community Benefits District. So as I understand it, what we would like to do is currently, I'm just going to give a hypothetical scenario. If your, if the taxes, the real property taxes on the assessed value of a property were to equal $100, right? And let's say you had the homestead tax credit, which was a 10% abatement. Again, it's all hypothetical. So you were only required to pay $90 per year in real property taxes. But then, keeping in mind that the surcharge for Midtown is 13.2, so let's just call it $13 extra, you would pay, right now what's happening is that individual would be paying $90 plus the $13 for a total of $103 per year in real property tax. We want to make it so that a certain subset of credits that people apply for, that are not matter-of-right credits, so it would be all of the credits in finances report, with the exception of the homestead tax credit and the homeowner's targeted tax credit, that for those individuals, the 13% or 13 cent surcharge would not apply to the $90, but would apply to the $100. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
The full property tax minus, without taking out the credit.
Without taking into consideration the credit. Yeah, so essentially what's happening is the Community Benefits District is currently bringing in less revenue than it should be in comparison to the other CBDs throughout the city because of this glitch, if you will. So we're trying to correct that glitch, but we don't want to, we don't want that to apply to the homestead tax credit recipients or the homeowner targeted tax credit recipients. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I'm not sure how this accomplishes that.
And finances.
Maybe Pedro can explain that a little.
Okay, and finances proposed amendment would essentially fix the glitch for the entire universe, which is not what the sponsors want to make sure. It only applies to the universe minus the homestead, as well as the homeowner's targeted.
I'd have to read the text for those two and maybe there's something in the existing law that would exempt it from being applied to the supplemental tax, but I just haven't had a chance to look at it.
Okay.
I just heard about it.
Yeah, so you're not prepared to opine on that, nor would you be expected to, just to confirm. Okay. Is Eric's, Madam Chair, is Eric Souza on the line?
No, not yet. Ray Jackson?
Ray is for the Westport repeal.
Councilman, if I may?
Please, please.
He has COVID, so he met with me just because we needed to have the conversation, but he is not in good position to testify.
Oh, yeah, the reason he's not here is COVID. So not to disclose his personal health issues, but.
So I have a question. Are you taxing people that's getting credit?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's an additional surcharge for the Community Benefits Districts. So the surcharge is not applied to the total assessment of the property. It's applied to, or it's not applied to the total taxable assessment of the property. It's applied to the total taxable assessment of the property minus the taxable deductions as a result of existing tax credits. The short answer is, I don't think we're prepared to move forward today. And that's the short answer.
Aaron, would you like to comment? Just for some clarity. I saw you shaking your head.
Well, I was just going, all I was going to add was what Councilman Costello was just saying, that it, from what I can understand, having read the report, the tax seems to be, the surcharge is applied after the existing tax credits have been applied. So, but it sounds like there is a, there's a fix that we, you know, would be better served, you know, addressing in recess.
Okay. I'm, I think one thing we need to pay attention to, and I'm sure the committee agree with every, all of the council members will agree, that we are, we are paying attention to equity in everything that we do and we want to make sure that this is being done in equity. It's okay. We'll hold on. Any other questions, council member?
No, no, Madam Chair. I defer to my colleague, Councilman Stokes, if he has anything, but otherwise, would ask for your consideration to recess on this matter.
Yeah, I totally agree. We need to recess on this and work this out. Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, we're going to recess and everyone will come back and we'll start over again. It sounds like there still needs to be some more dialogue and fleshing out some particulars before we come back again. And that, hopefully, we'll try to get something in maybe next month. I don't want to give any dates. So at that point, that was our last bill. And we're now in recess on this bill. And I want to thank everyone for attending today's hearing and have a nice, cool day.